Hi. Oh, hi. I'd like to call to order the policy committee meeting for the Nashua Board of Education for Wednesday, January 22, 2020. It is now 6:36 PM and we're in the Nashua North Boardroom. I'd like to do a roll call. Ms. Bishop, I'm here. Mr. Guarano?
Mr. Guarino is here.
Ms. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Any other? Ms. Raymond?
Yes, I'm here.
And Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Okay, so let's get this started. We have a couple of things to go over. We're looking at proposing some policies and it's like amending and rescinding some, so we'll just go in order of the agenda. So do we want to review the proposed DKA payroll procedures?
Okay.
So there are some changes outlined in red. Do you want me to just read them?
I think typically what we have done is you've kind of explained or had Ms. Fitzpatrick explain what it is that you're suggesting get changed. So in this case, it looks like it was a numbered policy that hadn't been reviewed since 1997.
Uh huh.
And so you're reviewing it and you have some suggestions?
Okay.
And so that everyone's aware, as the usual practice with the policies is that policies are reviewed by the person that is most knowledgeable in that area. So Dan Donovan looked at these policies and as Ms. Raymond said, the payroll procedure had not been reviewed since 97 and it was out of, I don't want to say compliance, but it's not what we do anymore. And so he proposed the new policy payroll procedures that are current with our practice. And for folks that are new to the board, we still have some policies that are numbered and over the years, we've been switching over to lettered policies to align with all the other districts in the state of New Hampshire. And so the DKA is just a different way of signifying the policy and the changes that are proposed here are to follow what we currently do.
Did anybody have any questions about the upgrades?
Well, can I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
Am I correct that we didn't, did we always have an Assistant Director of Business or did we just have an, is that a new position, the Assistant?
Assistant Director has been in the district since I've been here, but that's not incredibly long time. So it's possible that it's a position that was put in place in the last 10 years?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I have a question regarding the punch-in for timekeeping system. Were we doing that before? Is this just something new or we're just updating it to clarify that now that the employees have been punching in or did we just start that?
The punching in's been going on for a while. I think it was more to make sure that people understood that that was a responsibility. You can go into Cronos if you forget and put your time in there, but we prefer folks to use Cronos, which is the electronic method.
Okay, so this is just like a housekeeping cleanup?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Go ahead. And if someone is guilty of misusing that number three and they don't punch in or they misuse punching in, there's nothing we can, there's nothing, we don't need a policy that says how that will be dealt with?
That's an administrative issue.
An administrative.
That is dealt with through administration.
Oh, have these policies been, it was my understanding with the new strategic plan, they were going to be, all of our policies were going to be reviewed?
Yes, and that is part of the strategic plan, but also one of the board policies is that all policies will be reviewed every four years. And as you can see, for example, this one was 97. So what we're really trying to do is we're trying to go through the oldest policies, update them. And over the last couple of years, I've worked with different chairs of this committee to make sure that as we're updating policies, we're also current with compliance of the laws.
So just for clarification, ED 302 requires school districts to review all their policies every four years.
Requires administration?
No, ED, the state law ED 302 requires the school board of each school district to review all the policies every four years. So I don't know why that, we fell behind before I got here. And so when I was policy chair and when Mr. Guarino was policy chair, we've been working quite hard with Ms. Fitzpatrick to identify policies that hadn't been reviewed in more than four years and bring them forward, several each month until we're caught up. So we're not there yet.
No, and the whole, the whole time I was on the board, it was never caught up.
So I do have a question though. So it says punch-in in quotation marks. So it's not a time clock. So what do they do? Just for my own curiosity.
The badges, you swipe them down the side of the machine and it electronically, your name comes up in the time you punched in.
So it is a time clock. It's just a slidey thing instead of a punchy thing?
Correct.
Okay.
And one follow-up, does the board's cards work that way as well? No, right?
No, because, I mean.
No, no, I'm not.
No.
Thank you, that's fine. I'm not challenging or criticizing.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay.
So you need a motion to?
Send to the full board to vote.
So I make a motion that we send this policy to the full board for approval?
Okay.
I will second the motion.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to request that we say in the motion, maybe a friendly amendment, that we say that the, at least the letters, if not the title, just for housekeeping purposes so that when they type up the motions, it says?
From DKA?
Yeah, we moved to send policy DKA.
I make my motion to say I make a motion that we approve policy DKA?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Are you ready for the vote, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor to approve proposed policy DKA as presented to the full board for approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Now, you want to ask them to rescind 1470? And then I'll be asking to rescind policy 1470, which is the old payroll procedure.
So I make a motion, thank you for the reminder, I make a motion that we rescind policy 1470 as proposed and send to the full board for approval. I get that all right?
I think so, I had to write mine down.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion approved, sending to the full board. You have to vote. Can we have a vote on that?
Okay, on the motion, that's to rescind 1470, is that what that is?
Yep.
Okay, on the motion to rescind 1470, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries three to zero.
I only had what you gave to me. So now we're going to review policy number 10211 in regards to pupil insurance. We're looking to rescind this because we no longer provide it. Ms. Fitzpatrick, can you just fill us in a little bit about it?
I double-checked with Dan and as it turns out, students can get insurance through risk management in the city, but the school district does not offer insurance anymore. So this policy is no longer valid or needed.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
And then, well, could I just ask, is it, when I was looking at this, I was thinking of our poverty students and could they afford, so, but we're saying this will all be paid for by the district?
No, the opposite. Yeah, people have the option of getting.
So if they can't afford, what?
Then they qualify for healthy families, which is a New Hampshire state medical insurance.
So it's, so they would be covered either way?
But not by the school district?
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. This was basically only student accident insurance. This was just for playing sports.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, when I was reviewing these, I was thinking about, we had a student during my term that was, did the insurance kick in on that?
The city risk management insurance, the city insurance is where that kicks in.
So it's self-insured basically?
Yes.
So we paid for, are paying, thank you.
You're welcome. So can I get a motion to rescind 10211?
I move to rescind policy 10211, pupil insurance.
Thank you.
A second.
I'm sorry.
Sleeping on a switch.
Okay.
All those in favor of rescinding policy 10211, pupil insurance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Next on our agenda is to review policy EEA about pupil transportation services. There are some amendments that are noted in here and we will follow up with the rescinding of the other. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to speak a little bit to this as well?
This actually, David Rossio, our transportation director, looked at it and the changes that he made in the last two paragraphs is how we currently deal with when bus routes can't go their usual way or if there's a problem with bus transportation. And also, the bus route may temporarily be suspended for a period not to exceed five days. Before this, it said 24 hours, that's not realistic. It's just not realistic. And so the changes that were made, he made sure that they were in compliance, but they're also current with our current practice.
Uh huh. Yes, Ms. Raymond?
So I'm looking at 5423 that's attached to this.
They're separate.
So they are separate, because I was wondering if this incorporated 5423 or no?
No, it didn't, I misspoke.
They're completely different, okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Guarano?
I have a question. I'm not sure if Ms. Fitzpatrick can answer, but has there been a situation where there was an emergency when the bus service was suspended?
Not that I'm aware of. And the other piece too, that I probably should have pointed out is that the thing that is stricken is the transportation committee. There is not a transportation committee. So that was why that was stricken, but in my knowledge, there hasn't been a time where there's been serious disruption of bus service.
What kind of situation is this sort of intended for? Is it, do you know?
Well, I would, my guess would be some kind of catastrophic accident of a roadway where the ability to get from point A to point B was impeded because the roadway was no longer there. Let's say a flood, earthquake, sinkhole, that kind of thing. And then we would, you know, be notifying people and I'm sure we'd also be trying to find alternate ways to get the students to school.
Uh huh.
Yes.
And, thank you. And will the, will the drivers, the bus drivers, when they're, do they have, do they have to sign a document that says they've read these policies?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I can find out.
Well, my concern is that, I don't know all these policies, I tell you, I don't think, I doubt anybody does, but if you're.
There's a lot.
Yes, it's a huge book. But if you are directly involved in the transportation, then I would assume that that portion of it, I would hope that all our employees and that indeed, and that indeed, so that they don't violate our policies. It's like speed limit, if you don't enforce it, nobody, nobody abides by it, so.
I can make sure, I can check with Mr. Rossio that, because he works very closely with the bus company who we subcontract with. So I can check with him, because I do know that the bus drivers come to the district office for fingerprinting. So they may also receive the policies at the time that they come in for fingerprinting.
If they don't, I would, I would hope we would change that, because I do, I do think it is, it's critical that they know the policies that they're supposed to enforce. Okay.
And I actually had a question and it has to do with one of the bullets up top here, where the health and safety of schoolchildren could be endangered or where physical limitations exist. The superintendent or designated mayor lacks the distance requirements for transportation. Just looking at the snow and Main Street and kids walking down Main Street in the morning, this probably is a whole different policy, but do we ever think about bussing those kids in when they have to walk on the main roads to the school in the morning where people are rushing to get to work like I am?
I, just like, I've spoken to Dr. Mosley about this before, those are the circumstances where he will have a delayed opening or cancel school. So a lot of times when people are dissatisfied with his decision to have a delayed opening or cancel school, because they feel like there isn't, it's not snowing now or whatever, it's because of the concerns that we have a number of walking schools.
Number, yes.
And he has to, he takes his responsibility to make sure our kids are safe very seriously and he doesn't want kids walking in the street. He wants to wait until the sidewalks are clear before kids are walking to school, even if that means that we have to have a delay or an extra snow day for the city to get that done.
Okay.
I would hate to make that call.
Your rules for buses, you just pick kids up as they're walking down the street? No, I see them in the morning when I'm driving into work, I'm just thinking.
I would impound the public to be understanding of the position he's in when he's making these decisions. It's the one area that he has the most difficulty with, because if the person who lives close, they say, well, why shouldn't we open school? Everything's fine. But the person who's living in three towns away and they're in the backroads that are covered with ice, those people are going to say, oh yeah, you want me to risk my life to get to work? Is that what you're doing to me? So it's a no-win for him and he is, as she said, he is very conscientious and so sometimes we just need to give him a break. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we want to make a motion to?
I make a motion that we approve policy EEA as presented to the full board for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Are you ready for the, for the vote?
Oh, yes.
All those, all those in favor of the approval of policy EEA as presented to full board for approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
This isn't the one I thought, I apologize. Actually, this is related to this. It's incorporated. I was looking at the next one. So this one is the previous one. So it is incorporated.
I'd now like to discuss rescinding policy number 5423 in regards to suspension of bus routes. This, because it's incorporated into this first one.
So you want a motion?
We don't necessarily need the second, it's a bit redundant.
So I make a motion, is that what you want? That you, that we rescind policy 5423, suspension of bus routes as presented to the full board for approval?
I'll second.
I motion to take a vote?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
We have another bus policy to review. This has to do with smoking, lighting matches, or playing with hazardous items on school buses. It looks like this policy leaves it up to the bus company. No?
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Fitzpatrick, maybe you can speak to this?
Yes, all of this information is in JIC, which has to do with student discipline. And in JIC, which is about 11 pages long, there's a chart and it says what the offense, so to speak, is and what the consequence is. And all of these things are contained in JIC. So this is redundant because we already have it.
That's the Student Behavior Standards Policy, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So the level, I'm sorry, the class one, class two, class three offenses and, okay.
And so all of these are contained within JIC.
And the students, they have to, they are given these policies, they are, they sign something or not?
They're in the agendas, aren't they?
It's in the, it's in the student handbooks.
Okay.
So they get a student handbook at the beginning of the year.
I should have remembered that.
And it very, it has all the charts. So both students and parents will know what the consequence is for specific behaviors.
Is it a problem, do we know, on the buses?
Rarely. I mean, as far as smoking, lighting matches, or playing with hazardous items on a school bus, rarely. And when it is, we use appropriate consequences.
Thank you.
Whether that's bus suspension or additional consequences, it depends on every situation.
So you want me to make a motion?
Well, any other comments or questions?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I make a motion that we rescind policy 5422, smoking, lighting matches, or playing with hazardous items on school buses as presented to the full board for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Can I take a vote?
All those in favor of rescinding 5422, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay. Oh, sorry.
Motion carries three to zero.
Just mixing things up. I don't oppose. Okay, next on the list is a proposed policy EF in regards to food management, food service management. It's my understanding that it's, the food service personnel would be responsible for food service management.
Yes, and Dahlia Dagel, who is the Director of Food Services, I gave her the policies, she went through them, and then she and I sat together to make sure that we had done everything in compliance with any legislation, but also with what's currently happening.
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
As Heather likes to say, quibble. Right here, it says for all the RFPs plus current, and then there's nothing there.
Which, countdown, which paragraph?
One, two, three, four, five, on the sixth paragraph.
Great, I had, I didn't.
There's just a, it looks like either missing something or others.
What should it be?
Three.
Great question. Three-year retention policy for all RFPs plus current, we don't know.
I don't know. I didn't reread it after it was done.
Do we motion to table this until we're able to figure out what that sentence is?
Yeah, we probably should and.
Oh yeah, that's right, yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to find out what happened with that, because when she and I had turned it in, it was all set, so I don't know, something inadvertently got left off.
And what does RFP stand for?
RFP is when you are spending over $5,000, you have to put it out to bid. And that's, and.
Request for proposal?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew it was request.
An acronym, yeah.
And I knew it was proposal.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure about the F.
That's okay.
But anyways, so anytime it's over $5,000, you have to put it out to, and you have to get at least three bids, so that's what this is referring to.
Okay.
If you want that spelled out, I can ask them.
Now, probably be a good idea to spell it out.
Yes, please.
I also have, oh, go ahead.
No, go that way first.
Okay.
Okay, yes. Yes, Mr. Guarino?
On the, not the next paragraph, but the following paragraph, says a food service manager will follow their established written procurement procedures. Do they all have written procedures established? Should we ask them to establish procedures and then follow them? I mean, it's, we're just taking, we're taking it for granted that they've established written procurement procedures and provide them to the, I guess it's just a matter of wording.
Okay.
But I mean, I would just say, the food service manager will establish written procurement procedures and is expected to follow them, and then the, then the procedures should be provided to the district, something like that. But I mean, it's just taken for granted that they have them, but we want to make sure that they establish them.
And I will double-check, because I'm not 100% sure, but I think the procurement procedures, about how you go about purchasing, is actually through Dan Donovan's office.
Okay.
So that's, I'll double-check on that, because I don't want to misspeak.
Right, so it says they will follow their established, or whose, so that means that it's following someone else's procedures. Do we want them to follow our procedures, then we have to put that in there?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll clarify with her about that piece.
Okay, great.
So you want a motion?
To table it.
Or did you?
To ta, oh yeah, I just wanted to say that I approve, I approve. I appreciate how you, under board approved, usually you have the date when the last one was, but in this case, I appreciate how you wrote replaces 9130 and 9220, because it helped me to understand where you were going, you know what I mean? Without having to reread all of everything.
And if it's okay, oh, no, go ahead and table first.
Yeah, we can't rescind them until we have a new one.
Except the school lunch and milk programs. We no longer have milk programs.
Oh.
But if you want to wait, it's okay, we can bring the whole thing back at once. I'm not, I'm fine with that, however you want to do it.
Madam Chair? Well, if financing the school lunch and milk programs, which is 9220, if that's not going to affect this, we might as well just get it out of the way now, if you guys want to.
It's up to the will of the board, really.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
If we can rescind this one without changing what's going on in the school district, because if the milk policy, the milk program already doesn't exist, if we can just rescind this policy now, it's just one less thing we have to do later.
That's 9130?
That's 9220, so the second one.
Oh, it says the second one.
Yeah.
I don't care.
I make a motion.
Ah, okay. Yep, I see it.
I make a motion that we, that we suspend, rescind policy 9220 as presented to be forwarded to the board for approval.
I will second the motion.
And take a vote? All those in favor? Oh, you can say it, right?
You can say it, you can do it, you're the chair.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who disagree, say aye.
Opposed.
Opposed. All those opposed.
Okay. Motion carries three to zero.
Now, do we need to, do we make one for the other one to be?
Table it.
So I make a motion that we table policy EF as presented to the board and bring it back when we've gotten the answers to our questions.
Okay. I second that.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose?
Okay, motion carries three to zero.
And because some of the language in 9130 is in the policy we tabled, I don't think we should rescind that one until we have.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Yep, do we have to table that or do we just not address it?
We don't do anything with it.
Okay.
Because it exists, it just sits there.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
So she was asking about rescinding 9130, which would be incorporated in this new EF, but we can't, we don't have to table it, because it just sits there, it's already existing. We only table it if we're working on it.
Uh huh.
Or waiting to work on it, on a proposal. So that one has to stay on the website, as is, until we can come up with a replacement.
Uh huh. Next, any other comments or questions? Okay, next on the agenda is proposed policy EFC, free and reduced price lunch. Mrs. Patrick, do you want to speak to this?
Basically, what Ms. Dagel did was she looked at 9215, 9210, and she made a very short policy that covers that language, instead of having a really lengthy policy, which is 9210 and 9215. And the two paragraphs says what those two pages do.
Just more concisely.
Can I ask you, and maybe it's not a question that you know the answer to, but I'm wondering the, this, what, what income we're talking about when we're available to all children of low economic means and moderate income families experiencing difficulties? And what is the difference? I would assume the low economic people, they meet the qualifications, so they get the free and reduced lunch, but the moderate income families who. so they get the free and reduced lunch, but the moderate income families who experience financial, there must be a process through which they get approved.
Actually, even low-income folks have to fill out, there's paperwork to fill out, and it is a challenge for food service to get folks to fill out the paperwork for a variety of reasons, but there is a scale that they base it on, and so if your income is under a certain amount for this many people in the household, then you get free lunch and breakfast. If your income is this amount, let's say you're a two-income family, but someone gets laid off and their income drops, then you may qualify for reduced lunch prices. But it's a form that comes from the US government.
But do we know what that, it was, at one time, I believe, it was $20,000 for four people, but I don't know that for a fact, and I think it's nice for the public to know if we knew that.
It's, it's easily accessible.
Yeah.
On the National District website.
It is on the website.
And you can fill out the paperwork. I know my kids got the applications multiple times at the beginning of the school year, and on the application in there is house size, income level, which ones would allow you to get the free lunch and which would allow you to get the reduced, and then what the reduced price is, because the elementary, the middle, and the high school have different costs.
Yes.
For lunches.
And it's based on the national poverty levels, so the federal poverty level, so it's whoever many, it's like 120% of the federal poverty level based on your family size, which is, we don't have anything to do with determining that.
Correct.
No, I, I knew that, I was, I just, again, thought it would be good for the public to know. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Couple questions here. Parents who believe their children are eligible may contact the school nurse. Why would we contact a school nurse?
I, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but because it's confidential, your family income, you would go to the school nurse, which would naturally be confidential, and then they would provide you with the paperwork?
Okay, I just think that's kind of odd, the school nurse. You know, I think of nurses for illnesses, not for illness, but that's okay. And it also says, because I've read about it and heard about it from people regarding kids didn't pay their bills, they didn't have money, and you read it on Facebook, and I stay out of it, that kids are being deprived, not getting any food, and I, and I can't remember, I think it was in the policy manual, that the kids will get a sunflower seed and jelly sandwich, and I think milk for lunch. So I just want to let people out there know who's watching this, that the children, even if they don't have any money, or they didn't pay their bill, they're still going to be provided something to eat for lunch.
That's correct.
At the elementary and middle school levels, and then at the high school, we have a nonprofit run by students called Meals That Matter, and they provide vouchers for lunch.
Okay, but nobody's going to go hungry for the day?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, going to your point, they don't speak up. Unfortunately, sometimes they are embarrassed, and they don't, and I don't know how you, I don't, when you're shorthanded of help anyway, I don't know how you nip that in the bud, but...
Then, you're correct. All students have the opportunity to get food. So...
They have to speak up.
And if your, if your balance gets low, they do call, and then your daughter texts you at school and says, Mom.
I'm sure you know that.
They said, I don't have any money.
They used to beat me up.
But they do call, and in that message, they'll say, if you're having a problem affording your food, this is...
No, they try to be kind.
Fury's yelling at me. She said, that's not nice.
That's funny. Ms. Bishop?
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you.
You have something to say?
I do. I have a problem with the language and the way that it has been reduced, because it has gone from the school lunch food service program operates under the regulations of the National School Lunch Program, to the school lunch program in the local school. And so my concern is, is that those don't mean the same thing, and they could be interpreted very differently. So our, this policy to me says that we're running our own school lunch program, whereas the previous policy was very clear that we're operating under the National School Lunch Program and their guidelines. But when I read this one, I was like, oh, do we have our own guidelines that we made up? So I would very much feel, I think it's very important that we make it clear in the policy that we're talking about helping families to access the National School Free Lunch Program, or School Lunch Program. Does that make sense? Because it's administered by the USDA and the, a New Hampshire DOE. It's not administered by us at all. We just send all that stuff up to the state, and they deal with it, and then they say who's eligible. We don't make any determinations here at the local level.
I'm just wondering what you were talking about, at the high school with the vouchers, if that somehow helps incorporate in people getting lunches with the voucher, and not necessarily only going through the federal, the national program?
Well, the voucher thing is, it's a not-for-profit run by students, so I wouldn't put it in policy anywhere, because we can't...
I shouldn't want it to be excluded by saying that we would only follow the national mandates.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have a cold.
I also want to say that, and I probably should have attached it for reference, but 9210, a lot of this information is also provided in the new wellness policy.
Okay.
But if you want, I mean, I'm more than happy to ask Ms. Daigle to come back next month and speak to things specifically, because she is the expert in the area, and I don't want to misspeak, but I do know, because I was, I did a lot of work on the wellness policy, that a lot of this information is in there, but I would be happy to work with her to cross-reference so that you can be assured that that information is contained somewhere in the policies pertaining to food service.
Right, I mean, I think I personally would feel better if on the last, well, I guess it's only one sentence, in the last section of the first sentence, it said, "Free or reduced price lunches through the National School Lunch Program in the local school." And then we could just add back, I don't, actually, I don't, I'm indifferent, well, not indifferent, I'm ambivalent about whether or not we would add back what the National School Lunch Program is or not. But I definitely would feel better if it said the National School Lunch Program, as opposed to just the School Lunch Program. So, Ms. Johnson has her hand up.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I agree with you, Ms. Raymond, because I think the clarification, although it says, in accordance with federal regulations, I mean, that kind of covers everything, but what federal regulation can we adopt it to? What, which one is it referencing, really? And I think that whole last sentence, the National School Program, it just says everything, rather, it takes, it talks about the federal program. If you want to, like, put an asterisk right next to, in accordance with the federal guidelines or federal regulations, and you put a little asterisk, and you put that at the bottom of the page, that just might clarify everything without changing anything, and rewriting that whole paragraph. But it does reference on what we are regulated by, the government.
Yeah, so I, I also wonder, because I think if, if we go by just the federal guidelines, that means that we're only at the federal guidelines, we may actually be able to provide more than what, you know, people bigger than us are saying. Do we want to not leave that wiggle room? Because if we say at federal guidelines and...
My recommendation is to use this policy to say that we offer the federal, the national free, the National School Lunch Program in our schools, and explain what that is. And then if, if the district has the funds at some point, or if we're able to access grants at some point to expand that, I think that would be great. But if we put it in a policy that we might have more, and then we don't, we run into a compliance part.
Like, at a minimum, the school will meet?
I wouldn't even say at a minimum, because that's all we can do right now. But I wish we had extra money for that, but we, we don't have, you know, two pennies to rub together at this point.
Thank you, we sure don't.
So, I, I mean, I think our intention is good, but my suggestion, because these policies are legally binding, so whatever we put in here, we're obligating our district to follow.
Right.
So I make an amendment, because it has to be me, because I'm the committee.
Right, I'm not one of, a member of this committee, I'm just loud.
Jump over you is all I'm trying to say. So I make a motion that we amend Policy EFC in the first paragraph, the bottom line, to say, "Price lunches through the National School Lunch Program in the local school."
Okay. A second.
Oh, okay. But you were amending where, which?
EFC.
Yep.
Which is the free and reduced price lunch.
Which paragraph?
The first paragraph, the third line, to read, "Price lunches through the National School Lunch Program in the local school."
And may I just say, "schools" with an S, because we have 17 of them?
Oh, thank you, yes. That was, that's a good catch, too.
Any other comments or questions? I actually had one more question, sorry. On, in Policy 2110, it states what Ms. Johnson was talking about, that no student shall be deprived of milk, meal or milk due to inability for parents to pay. In such cases, the school will provide lunches free or at reduced price in accordance with the established federal guidelines. I like that.
And actually, I can speak to that, that's in the wellness policy.
It's in the wellness policy, okay. I just want to make sure it's somewhere, we're not getting rid of this and then saying, oh, we don't have to do that anymore.
Yeah, no, it's in the wellness policy.
Okay. Do you want a motion to...
Right, you have to vote on the amendment.
You have to vote on the amendment.
All those in favor of amending the motion to state the National School Program in the local schools?
So the...
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Are we ready to make a motion to approve the full policy now?
As amended, yeah. We'll to go to board.
So I make a motion that we approve the proposed Policy EFC as it's presented to go to the full board for approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those who oppose?
Motion carries, three to zero.
Thank you.
And now we, so we need to also do 9215?
Yes.
So I make a motion that we rescind Policy 9215 as presented to go to the full board for approval.
I second. All those in favor of sending Policy 9215 to the full board for approval, say aye.
Wait, of rescinding.
Not rescinding.
Rescinding. Of rescinding 9215.
What did I say?
You said, sending it to the full board.
Sending it.
Rescind.
It's not the same.
Not rescind.
All those who are in favor of rescinding the motion to the board? Wait, what did you say?
Rescinding.
She said, rescinding Policy 9215.
Going to get better, folks, we got a comedian coming next week.
Trying to be funny.
Well, hey, you know, a little fun.
It's a board meeting, there's no fun here.
Actually, it's kind of nice for a change.
Right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose? Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, did we talk?
We did not rescind 9210.
Yeah, I was going to say that. Should we?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Ms., just to make sure I'm clear, Ms. Bishop had a question about item three on here, which Ms. Fitzpatrick said is included in the wellness policy.
Correct.
Which is somewhere, and then...
Well, it is a policy, it's in the policy manual.
Okay, and then I had a question about number one, which was covered by Ms. Ziem's amendment to EF.
Yes.
No, EFC. And, so, that's where I am.
Did you need to do anything else with it?
We jumped right over that.
Before you rescind it?
No. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Did, did she, did Mrs. Fitzpatrick, am I kidding?
That's okay.
Did you speak on that, objects of the type, is that, it's obsolete now?
Yes.
So I make a motion that we rescind Policy 9210 as presented to, to move forward to the full board for approval as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those who oppose? Motion carries three to zero. Next on the agenda is taking a look at 9211, prohibition on sale of minimal nutrit-
Nutritive value food.
Nutritive value food, to rescind this motion.
All of this information and more is contained in the wellness policy.
So I make a motion that we rescind Policy 9211 as presented to the board to move forward for full approval of the board.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who dis-
Dispute.
Dispute. All those who...
Nobody here would do that.
Oppose.
Can I ask a quick question?
Motion carries three to zero.
Do you know the letter designation for the wellness policy off the top of your head?
No, I can look it up on my phone.
No, I can, I can do that.
Okay, all right.
Just wanted to...
And I apologize, I probably should have had the wellness policy included in the packet for you guys to refer to. So in the future, anything like this, I will make sure that the policy that is covering many of the ones we're rescinding is provided in the pack.
Thank you. Thank you. And just to say, I made it through high school on orange soda and Skittles from the vending machines.
We probably all did.
I actually had a student speak to me during the community conversation on race injustice at South, and he was very upset that he couldn't have any caffeinated beverages in any of the vending machines. But I understand it's a law, like, part of the USDA. So, times change.
And I think the good thing about it is, it, it does at least say to them, this may not be the healthiest food you could pick, which we don't say enough of truly. So, and I'm an offender, coming from me, that's gutsy.
So now we move on to Policy eight.
Did we vote on that?
Yes.
About 8510?
No, yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We didn't vote on that one yet, no.
Okay. Can I get a, sorry, do we need a motion first?
So you're looking for a motion to rescind 8510?
Yes.
Why?
Oh, sorry, I didn't even go over it yet.
I confused you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The blind leading the blind, I think they call that.
So, Policy 8510, program for retain, program for retention of well-qualified personnel. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, first of all, I want to point out that it was never accepted as a board policy. And second of all, we have regulations and contracts that dictate how we attempt to retain well-qualified personnel. And so although it was never really accepted by the board, it's actually in the policy manual. And so between the fact that we have programs, for example, our peer mentor cohorts, and a salary scale that is negotiated, and fringe benefits that are negotiated, and working conditions that are negotiated, I'm asking that we take this out of the policy manual, because A, it was never made a policy legitimately, because it never had a date it was voted on, and two, all of this stuff is dictated through contract negotiations. And the state, because we have very specific rules around who we can hire to do specific jobs.
If it was never approved by a board, then why can't we just pull it from the policy manual? Why would we need to vote? Because we can't rescind something that wasn't approved. I'm confused.
Because I didn't want to get in trouble for taking something out of the policy manual, frankly. So if I have your approval to do that, then we will do that.
Has Tara or Gabby researched to make sure that there wasn't something we missed?
Yes.
Okay, because I know some of them were very, very old.
Well, I don't, it's, it... It's up to the will of the board. I just was not going to take it upon myself to remove something from the policy manual, because I like my job.
It would be in the minutes of our meeting that, that we said, just take it out, right?
It would, if, then maybe that's the motion. The motion, instead of to rescind, could be, we move to remove 8510 from the policy manual, because it was never approved.
Minutes to protect Mrs. Fitzpatrick for future generations.
Right, so that's a, I mean, I would say something like, remove it because it was never approved by the board, or something.
So I make a motion, are we ready for that? That we remove, we, we remove Policy 8510, program for retention... That we remove, we remove policy 8510, program for retention of well-qualified personnel from the, from the book of.
Policy manual.
From the policy manual, since it was never truly legally there, it should not have been there legally anyway.
I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those oppose? Passes three to zero.
Can I just ask one question, going back to, and maybe in this case, seeing the policy, well, you're saying it's contractual law. I just, and I don't know, maybe this isn't the place to ask the question, but one of my concerns has always been that we tend to, for instance, you hire one individual for whatever the job might be, and that person has ten years' experience, and you hire another person for the equal job in another school, and that person has thirty years, but they get the same pay, which to me, never made sense. And I don't know if there's anything you can even do about it, or if there's, I don't know.
When people are hired, the pay scale is looked at, their experience and their level of education, and based on years that we can give them credit for. For example, private school time doesn't count.
Private school time, doesn't it?
Correct. And so the years of experience people have as a teacher, as far as a teacher contract goes, that's what's taken into consideration. But private schools, Catholic schools, serving as a paraprofessional, you get some credit, but not full credit. So there's a whole formula that's used to put people on the salary to begin with.
So we have charts now. So if you were to go and pull out the teacher contract, you would see the chart so that you could hypothetically look at a person with ten years' experience versus a person with thirty years' experience, and see where each of them fall on the chart, and it would be different.
And it wasn't so prevalent with the teachers as it was with the higher, the higher.
And so.
The higher positions. It may be, though, some of what you're saying, certainly, you could compare, what is equivocal, equivocable, equivalent, I guess I want to say, experience? And so that may be what gets, that, sorry. Yes, he's telling me, I've gotten away from the mic, I'm sorry, folks. So, so I appreciate what you're saying, and I'll think on it some more, try not to cause too much trouble.
No, I, I think it would be worth it for you to look up some of the contracts that have been approved over the last, say, three or four years, because I think that that is addressed in almost all of them. You know, the, because we've done the directors, we've done principals, we've done teachers' contract, and so we did, the secretary's contract was last year as well. And so each of them had a scale, really a chart, where you had to go down like the number of years and then step over. It was, it's very complicated.
And I, and I'm not, I have looked, that was one of the things.
Move your, just move your mic over this.
Oh, I'm doing it again, he's going to get me. I have looked at, I was, that was, I was on that committee HR for quite a while, and it was, it was prevalent more at the principal, assistant superintendent, you had to get up to the, to the higher. I want to be careful how I use these words.
But now they have.
Anyway, I appreciate what you're saying.
Right, now they've organized, because in the past, they weren't, they weren't unionized, and now those levels are unionized, and so they have to work together.
The principals were, were reunion, they went out for a while.
And now they're back.
But all of the others, as far as I know, but it's all right. I will, I will think on your comments, and thank you.
So next on the agenda is policy KIB, visits to schools by candidates and public officials. Ms. Fitzpatrick, it looks like we're updating.
Yeah, and the only change is, the registrar's office from the city called and said that they would like to set up a time annually to come and get students registered. And because we want our students to be active, involved citizens, this is a nonpartisan, sign up, register to vote when you're eighteen, so you can vote and become an active citizen. So the only change is that last sentence in the first paragraph, to support student engagement, the registrar from the city clerk's office will be invited to visit the high schools, because there's two, annually to register students that have reached the age of eighteen to vote. And we originally said seniors, but not all eighteen-year-olds are seniors. So we changed it to be students that are of the age to vote. And I think that, A, it's important to encourage our kids to get involved in the political system, but also, the city clerk reached out and asked us to do this, and I think it's a nice cooperation.
Oh, it's wonderful.
Yes, Ms. Raymond?
I have a quibble. Under, as you go down, under the bullet points, there's the one, two, three, the fourth bullet point says advocacy clubs are subject to all aspects of this policy except for number three, but the bullets are not numbered. So I would like, if we're going to say except for number three, that the bullets be numbered so that it's clear. That's all.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't, I don't know that that needs an amendment, or if that's just a grammar thing.
That, that's a formatting thing that I can speak to Gabby about.
Yes, Ms. Ziem?
On number three, I, it says, all other recognized, if you invite one, then everybody should be invited. I have heard frequently over my years that that is not the case, that people will invite their, whatever their candidate of choice happens to be, and, and then there is no invitation to the other side of, which, in my view, I, see, I have, I have this thing that I think we're teaching young people to think, to think for themselves, not for me to think for them and say, this is what you want to do. But to say, here's candidate A, here's candidate B, you make your choice, but do it educated, do it by knowing some of the things about these candidates. And so I wonder if there's something that can go in there, because it's saying, all other will be provided the same opportunity. But I don't, again, I have heard, over my years, I've heard an awful lot of people say that, that it isn't, and it's probably on both sides. I'm, I'm not trying to point to either side, because both sides tend to, we all stumble on occasion. So I'm just saying, if there was some way we could do that, or expand on it even a little bit, it would make me very happy, but maybe the others don't feel that's necessary.
I can speak, just in terms of practice, in terms of what I know that the high school principals have done since I've been here, and Keith has been around longer, Mr. Richards. But I don't know of a time since I've been here that they reached out to a candidate. When we've had any politician, Governor Sununu was here, we had a couple of state senators, their offices actually reached out to the school and said, we'd like to come. So in my experience here, we don't solicit people to come to the school, they call us and say, hey, we want to come and talk to students about this, or we want to do a presentation about that, that sort of thing.
And I'm very, I was a member of, of the Republican, and they, in those, both of those organizations, I believe they adhered to this. So I'm certainly not, I think that sometimes, though, when individual teachers, and I think sometimes it's even unbeknownst to administration, and so like a civics teacher could, could invite their candidate of choice, or their, and certainly if it wa, I don't want it to be like I'm being critical, I just want it, I just want those teachers who, I mean, we have a lot of teachers, as you well know, and you can't, sometimes, what's going on in the individual class, you, you have to have faith that they are adhering to our, or at least trying to adhere to our policies as they best understand them, but again, we're all human. I'm just saying that in those cases, I think they should be aware, so, and I don't know if that would be taken care of by a line in there, I, I don't know, it's something that, because I don't, I don't, it's certainly not the, it is not, the Republican and the Democratic, both of those clubs are exceptional. I know that for a fact, they're exceptional.
I think I can answer what you're asking. The first sentence of the third paragraph says, political candidates and civic leaders' visits must be approved by the school's principal and the superintendent. So if somebody directly violated the policy, that's a whole different thing, because it says in the policy that any visitors have to be approved by the principal and the superintendent. So I think that that addresses your concern.
So what you're saying is that actually there is a paragraph wherein, if you felt that had been violated, you could, you could bring it.
You could act on it.
You could bring it to the surface. Okay, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you. I should have picked up on that myself.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Any other comments or questions?
So you want me to make a motion?
Yes.
So was this a rescind?
Amend.
What's my name?
No, no, to accept, it was a friendly, it was not really something that needed amending, it was just a numbering thing, so that's formatting. It doesn't actually change.
So you want to?
Make a motion to approve.
To approve it as, KIB as presented?
Yes, so I make a motion that policy KIB, as presented to the committee, be sent to the full board for approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? Motion carries three to zero. And next on the agenda is proposed policy JICA in regards to student dress code.
This, this policy was before the previous board, and there are some minor changes, but I think, would Ms. Raymond like to speak to this?
Sure. So this is my baby. I very much want to have this policy. I think that it's important that we, what I have found is that each school has their own rules for what's appropriate and what is not appropriate dress. And I am struggling with the fact that I saw at a school, a do's and don'ts for summer attire, and it was all examples of girls' clothes. And being a mom of both a girl and a boy, my back, like all the little hairs on my neck just raised. So I don't know that, I don't have any evidence that our administrators are treating people differently based on their gender.
Actually, I was asked to research that, and I gave the research, and it turns out that more boys actually did because of the hat rule.
Yes, because of the hat rule, but, but I don't have any evidence that, of any, no one has come up to me and said, I think my child was treated unfairly because of their gender. So let me be clear that this is not something where, you know, someone from the public has complained to me about it. But there are other districts across the country who are adopting these, and earlier this fall, we were talking about our transgender and gender non-conforming students, and I thought this was a nice time to take dress codes from being differentiated by gender and come up with something neutral, especially so that if we do have students who are in transition or who have transitioned, that there's no confusion there. But that also, there's no confusion between one teacher's version of what's okay and another teacher's version of what's okay, or one school, if a student transfers from one school to another, the rules should be the same. I tried to make it, I adopted this from a dress code in Virginia. This was their little diagram, I shamelessly stole it because I like it, because it kind of takes each of our personal feelings about chastity, or morality, or, you know, appropriate coverings, out of what the school district is saying is okay. Because I really think that's a parenting decision. Parents get to decide, you know, what they think is how much, and then the school gets to say, for hygiene and safety, this is what we say. And so people aren't using their own personal judgment. Having said that, Ms. Oden, at the last full board meeting, had asked that we get feedback from administrators about what they felt about this, and if they thought it was practical, or if they had quibbles or feedback, and I don't, I don't know.
Administration didn't, and the main reason for that is that a lot of this information, we cross-referenced it with all the different schools' dress codes, and what they have written in their handbooks, and they're very similar. So people didn't feel like it was a huge drastic change. The difference is, as Ms. Raymond said, each elementary, middle, and high school have slightly different dress codes, and they're, they're not 100% consistent. If we had a policy in place, the dress code handbook version would align with the policy.
So we would just print out the little, the little figure in all the handbooks.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I think there should be a dress code at this point in time, because students learn better if they're dressed appropriately, and that's why the parochial schools never changed their dress code, and everybody, it's, you know, they all dressed about the same, because nobody feels that someone is dressed better in more, in better clothes and the jewelry. You see the way some kids come to school, and it's the same way you at a job. If you dress in blue jeans and you go at a high-class job, people look at you differently in the way you present yourself. And I think it's about time that we have more of a dress code here, and kids come to school dressed appropriately, because they're coming to school to learn, not to compare themselves, how much jewelry, how much better the clothes cost, we're in school to learn, and I, hopefully, this might cover a lot of stuff here with these kids. So I'm, I've said for many years that there should be some type of a dress code, and hopefully we can, this will be a smooth transition, because most of the schools, but now we've combined it, and everybody is going to be on the same page here, so not one school is, is dressed differently than the other. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Ziem?
I have seen numerous violations of this policy over my thirteen years.
It's not a policy yet, but.
Numerous, I would say, doesn't do it justice. So the question that comes to mind, how do, I read what it's saying, how you enforce it, but then the second question that comes to my mind after reading how they're going to enforce it, they're going to send them home from school, and it's been my, it's been my understanding that some of these kids consider that a reward, not a punishment, to be sent home from school. And if they come back and continually do that, and that's why I think Mrs. Oden's suggestion was especially appropriate, because it is our admin, it is our teachers who are going to have to enforce this for the most part. And I, my heart goes out to them. I tell you honestly, because some of these kids are way bigger than they are, and they're intimidating, and if we're going to do it, I think we, I don't know, I would, oh, I'm doing, he's telling me again, sorry, I was talking to myself. Did anybody hear any of that foolishness? So, but I will have Mrs. Fitzpatrick address my concerns. Thank you.
One of the things I'll tell you is that our, the first option is always to ask a student if they have something they can put on. We also offer students things to change into. So the first option is, keep them in school and get them dressed more appropriately for the day. Phone calls at the middle and elementary level would go home, and elementary is a little different, it's not the problem that it is at middle and high school. But the administration tries to deal with it in a way of getting kids to put something else on to cover up, and that's always the first option.
And how, may I? How will, since this is a new policy, how will these, again, I would, I still, I would, going back to the strategic plan, and I was more than impressed with the idea that these policies would be, especially new policies, would first go to the people who have to enforce them, because to me, they can give us so much information that is so practical in making a reasonable decision, something they can live with. So I, I, I still think it should go, I would like for, I would like for it to follow the new strategic plan, is there any reason that can happen?
Well, a lot of the strategic plan talks about a safe and positive learning environment, and if you look at some of the things on here, I would say it. and if you look at some of the things on here, I would say it doesn't feel safe if somebody's displaying vulgar discriminatory or obscene language or images on their clothing. So I think that in the way that you're talking about, this does align with the strategic plan, because the environment we're trying to create for kids shouldn't have none of these things.
In that, that really not, that's not what I was saying, and I probably didn't say it very well. My understanding was that, that the, that policies were going to be addressed at their level first, some committee.
Yes.
And that committee would, would tear it apart amongst themselves and say, this is better, this is, you know, they would analyze it, they would, they would, they would massage it into its best form, best practice. And so this one in particular, I would feel they should do it, because I feel this is going, it goes to the vaping and to the cell phone, those are very controver, this is just as controversial in my view.
Agreed.
Especially those girls who, I mean, sorry, but I wouldn't let my dog grab a bounce like that.
I'm just gonna say, people have a lot of different body types, and one of the things that this dress code is meant to assist with is so that people of different body types aren't treated differently. So as long as you're covered from your armpits to three to four inches below, you know, and seam-wise, that's what the dress code asks for. And so that way, and straps, obviously, she's a little guy. So that way, girls especially, but also boys, aren't being singled out for their body type or their body shape, especially as kids grow and their bodies change. We don't want them to feel isolated or targeted or treated differently because of their changing bodies. Having said that, what, to your other point, and Ms. Oden made this point at the last board meeting in December, was, and I agree completely, that policies, especially using the strategic plan, ought to be vetted by the people who are using them. And so Ms. Oden had asked Ms. Fitzpatrick to do that with the administrators, the assistant principals at the schools. There isn't a committee of assistant principals. So she had to actually reach out to the assistant principals and get their feedback and ask them if they wanted any changes.
So, may I just, so are you saying to me that in the strategic plan, it was the assistant principals who were going to vet the new policies, or was it going to be a committee that was set up?
There is not a committee to vet policies. So the strategic plan sets up.
Right, that committee.
Right, the strategic plan sets up a number of task forces to look at various categories of issues, and then they may suggest changes to policies, or changes to the way that we do things, or changes to classes or whatever. But the idea is that if, if there are, that those shouldn't, that we still are doing the policies. Does that make sense? So we wouldn't have sent any of the other policies that we just had through a task force, right?
No, I understand that they always have to be approved by this committee and then the full board. I, I get that. No question, I get it, 13 years' worth, no offense, I'm not trying to be arrogant. And I just am, you know, I do it without trying. But my thing is that, that I, again, I feel very strongly, I was so impressed because I sat through so many policies, and after we passed them without vetting them through these people who, who have to enforce them, we had problems with them. Some of them were totally ineffective. And so I, I considered it a small miracle that the strategic plan came up with this. I thought it was, I was very impressed, I can't even say how much impressed I was. So having said that, now that we're, it doesn't sound to me like we're actually going to do that, and so if we're not.
Can I just clarify your question? I think what you're asking is how do the, the people who are enforcing this feel about it?
Yes, I.
Do they feel that it's doable?
I, yes, I want to hear, and I, and no offense to the assistant principals, but I suggest that the teachers have it harder than they do, and I'm not, because you, when you're in that class of 23, 24, 25, 27 sometimes even, if you have two or three that, that are a challenge consistently, they can make your life miserable. And so I just, in fairness to them, I, I, I would like that they get some kind of opportunity to.
And I will answer, general practice is, teachers will actually send them at the high school to their academy to speak to their assistant principal. Teachers don't generally deal with this, they send it to administration.
The kids?
Yes. So the, and, and the administrators said, this is not significantly different than the policy we already have. They, excuse me, the rules they already have in their manuals that go home to the students and the parents. So we don't have a district policy on dress code, but all of the schools have dress codes in their handbooks that go home to parents and students. And so when the administrators saw this, they said, it's not really significantly different than what we have in our handbooks already. The major change that I think Ms. Raymond spoke to is that we wanted to make the student dress code.
Gender neutral.
Gender neutral. I was like, it's not gender bias, whatever. Gender, and so that's, that's why the, you know, the, the sort of stick figure to make it so that this applies to any student in what's appropriate dress, and it's not significantly different. And there are challenges, but generally speaking, fashion has changed too, and you just don't see as many belly shirts, the low, low, low hip huggers are out, they're not in. So you don't see as much as we did, let's say, 10 years ago when it was constantly like, you know, you need to cover up, you need to cover up, you need to. So.
I, I. I'm actually gonna, Mr. Guarino has had his hand up for a bit.
I apologize.
That's okay, no, no problem. I just wanted to assure Ms. Im that those, those committees that are going to be put in place for, from the strategic plan are still going to be active in, in sending us policies for us to, for us to look over. So I, I just want to reassure, even though this one may, even though you might have wanted this one to go a little bit vetted through one of those committees a little bit more, I, I just wanted to reassure you, I fully expect that, that, that our strategic plan is going to spin off those committees, and, and some of them haven't got off the ground yet, but I expect them to get off the ground. And, and they will be meeting with parents, with stakeholders, parents, students, administrators and teachers, and they will be sending us policies, not just, not just with dress codes, but other issues too. There's other important issues that we have in, in the district. So, so I wouldn't say that, you know, that, that they're not going to be relevant or, or, or part of it. I fully expect that, but they're, you know, we're, we're going to get what their recommendations, and then we're, we're going to have the ultimate say on what, what we pass.
Ms. Johnson had something to add.
Thank you. I think this is a good beginning. If it has to be elaborated a little bit more, anything added, anything subtracted, it can always be done, but this clarifies everything across the board, and so everybody knows exactly what we're expecting from the students and how they need to be addressed to come to school. Now, with that said, the board approves this on next week, is it Monday or Tuesday night?
If, if this committee votes to send it on.
Right.
Then the board would vote on whether or not to approve it on Monday.
Okay.
But they would have the option of public comment at that point. I mean, they could come here now, but.
Right, and, and that's always open, and that's always good, because then we can hear the public's opinion.
Yep, and it's been to the full board before, so the public, this will be the second time that the public has had an opportunity to weigh in.
Okay. It goes into the policy. Are we going to update the students to send home the updated policy? So that would go home to all students, it's going to be on the website, so everybody would be able to see what the board has agreed upon if they vote on it on Monday.
Yes, and it would go in the handbooks when they're republished for the next school year.
For the next school year, but everybody will have a chance to see this prior to the next school year.
Prior to spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Im, say.
So are they, Mr. Guarino, Mr. Guarino, you were speaking about the strategic committees that are going to be.
Get her an earwin.
Are going to be meeting. You're telling me that strategic, those committees are still meeting, they haven't not, they haven't dispersed, and that subcommittees will be coming?
I can speak to that.
I think, I think.
As an example, we have a behavior committee that is a specific task force, and they are getting together to talk about behavior and expectations, and out of that committee, I anticipate that they're going to have some recommendations around JIC, which is specifically around student discipline and perhaps some other areas. So those, and there's also a social emotional learning task force, and I'm sure that they'll come forward with recommendations. The committees are up and running, but we have, it's a five-year plan. Okay, so.
Oh, changes slow.
Yes, but the committees are up and running, and they're meeting, and they're starting to form sort of their agenda about what it is that they're doing using the strategic plan as their guide. And so as we move forward, I'm sure that things will come forward from those different task forces. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
My daughter says just build a new high school, or elementary schools and middle schools, and turn the air conditioning on really high.
All right, that's a good plan.
Right, it's brilliant. Do we want a motion on this? Mr. Guarino?
I move to approve policy JICA as presented to the full board for approval.
I second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
That would be me.
Okay. Motion carries two, with, with one negative and two positive. Two in the aisle.
And I just say, I'm not opposed to a dress code, I think it's a wonderful thing. I applaud Mrs. Raymond for having the courage to bring it forward, because it won't be very popular with the kids, I'm sure. So, no, well, it's, oh, our student liaisons are wonderful, and they're a reflection, so we've got good kids.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
I see Ms. Johnson has her hand up. I didn't know if you could see her from where you were sitting.
That's okay. I just have a question. The Behavior Task Force Committee, I know last board, you've dealt with that whole bullying issue. Is that going to be something that's, that they're looking at also?
Yes, it's all part of it.
It's all part of it, so something is going to be brought to the board?
Well, I can't guarantee that, but I would assume they'll be bringing things forward.
Yeah, if they have a recommendation for changes to policies, they will bring that to the board. Everyone has their hand up.
Were there, Mrs. Raymond, were there policies that you didn't get to, like the vaping and the cell phones and, and the one that Mrs. Johnson just mentioned? Are you saying, I hope you're saying there are.
So, yes and no. So, so the, the question of cell phones comes up every year, and every year there's a rousing debate about what to do about it. People feel very strongly on all sides of the issue, and so I know that that's something that high school continually talks about as the middle school administrators. We had the Ed Council meeting today, which is the, like, an opportunity for teachers from each level to give some feedback, and I'll provide a more extensive update at the board on Monday. But we talked about, we talked about all of these things, and we talked about the task forces at length and kind of what, what various groups are working on. So vaping, right now, they're working with the Prevention Coalition, they're doing presentations in all of our school, all of our middle school and high schools. They also have students doing some outreach in the spring at the elementary schools for fifth grade, so there's stuff going on with that. Cell phones, different teachers have different thoughts. Some teachers are using them in the classroom and having students look things up on their cell phones, and other teachers are asking students not to use them at all. My son is under the impression that the law is that he has to stay locked in his locker and be off, and I have no intention of ever telling him differently, so.
And I can speak to that, just in terms of the different levels, I think you can all agree that middle school students generally don't have the same judgment as older students. And so the policy in the middle school is off in a way, because middle school students often don't know when it's appropriate and when it's not. Not that all high school students do, but many of them have a much better understanding of, in the cafeteria at lunch is fine, you know, and some teachers do utilize them as learning tools in classes. And so there are different rules for different levels because of the maturity of the students.
And there's been a generational shift, I think, regarding this, and even in the last couple of years, there's been a change. But I can say as a parent, and I said this today, and I've said it publicly before, I was against, my, my son's 11 and a half, he started middle school this year, I was like dead set against him having a cell phone. Like, no, 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 and his father wanted him to have one, and we compromised with him getting one. So, and the very first day he had his cell phone was the day that Elm Street had a lockdown because of an incident down the street. And I, as a mom, was so relieved that the teachers allowed the students to have their cell phones on that day. So he was able to text me and say, here's where I am, I'm safe, you know, the teachers are calming us down. Like, as a parent, that made me feel so much better. And so as he gets older, I think I might turn into one of those parents who's like, you could deal with me if you're going to try and take my kid's cell phone. Like, I hate to be that parent, so unless I have evidence that my child is misusing it, like, I'm going to be that parent that wants them to have it for safety reasons, not so I can text him all day, but so that if, heaven forbid, something happens, I know where he is. So.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that we, we actually changed our policies last year about vaping, so we added that, we made it a little stronger about that. I mean, if you, if you have other proposals, obviously, you know, other ideas, definitely. And as far as the cell phone use, it's very flexible, but we do have a, a specific policy. We allow the teachers to, as, as Ms. Fitzpatrick said, it depends, you know, what is age appropriate too. And so it's different for different, different grades, and teachers make their own policies in their classroom. And as, as Ms. Raymond said, some teachers actually use cell phones. I, I know my son, when he was in high school, they were actually creating apps in one of his class, so they needed their cell phone, they're actually using them to do, to create software for cell phones. And as far as the board committees, what's going on with those strategic plan committees, I fully expect that, that they're going to, the full board will have a report on the activities. Whether they come up with recommendations for changes, procedures of policies or not, I fully expect that we're going to have, at our full board meeting, update reports from what's going on, so, so the full board will be informed about that. So I hope that, that helps, you know, because sometimes you see these committees going on, you know, you don't really know what's happening, but they, they, I, I believe they will keep us all informed about what, what their activities are.
Yeah, I think we're going to be able to know exactly what's going on in the schools, and they're going to keep us updated on, on the comings and goings, and I would motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to vote on that, do we?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Motion to adjourn, you have to vote.
All right.
Okay.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
At 8:05.
I meant to thank Mrs. Fitzpatrick, great job, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.